Okay, this regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee will come to order on Thursday, August 23rd at 7:00 PM. Let's see. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. Is anyone in the audience recording this meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. All those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, thank you. Mr. President, please take your role.
(inaudible) will not be here. Misty Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Gazillo?
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer will not be here. Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
He'll be right back.
Oh, he'll be right back. I'm sorry. He will be right back.
Yeah.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mrs. Lazzori?
Here.
And Mr. Amarcost?
Here.
Mr. Bartels?
Here.
And our student rep is here. Oh, thanks for being here. And our CBA rep is not here. We have -- oh, Lara, hello. Sorry about that. Lara's here. And we have a --
She could go to the CBA.
-- quorum. Lara, if you'd like to join us, you're welcome to. It's up to you.
I can sit up there.
(laughing).
What did Billy see?
You've been invited to the table, Lara.
Thank you.
Do we have an impact here?
We'll get her one. I'll probably have one that says CBA rep, actually. Welcome, Lara.
Thank you.
Okay, the Chair declares this meeting's agenda to be valid in accordance with open meeting law. At this time, if there's no objections by the committee, we'd like to move the Wacona Building Project presentation and motion up. We have G.R.A. and Skanska here with us this evening, and also Mr. Farnes from the Eagle. But before that, are there any responses from the audience before we move into that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Carl, do you want to get into it right away?
Carl has his down pat, right?
Okay.
Round three.
Thank you very much.
Carl, the only thing, actually, is I just want to preface, Mr. Rob said this far more eloquently than I could, given that he and Mr. Callahan have spent probably the vast majority of their adult lives in this building, Aaron being here since he was 14. Just really the importance of -- (laughing) it's quite an amazing perspective Mr. Rob has on this building project, combined with Mr. Callahan, who's been here for quite a long time. It really -- we just felt so involved in every aspect of the decision-making, and this really is a full recommendation of the working group to the Full School Building Committee, and now the Full School Building Committee to you. So I think that's certainly reassuring, knowing that those two were so actively involved in all of the decisions.
Okay. Well, we got a preview here. Well, what I want to share with you tonight is that we're at another important milestone in the project with the State School Building Authority, the MSBA. And the next submission that we'll be making in early September is called the -- they call it the Preferred Schematic Report. We would rather call it the Preferred Alternative, because that's what it means. It's a time where we've taken all the multiple of alternatives and narrowed it down to the one alternative that we'd like to move forward with, into schematic design. And so I want to share that with you, both in terms of what's involved in this mission, and obviously the specific design itself. One of the things that we've done in the last, well, actually, couple months is, since the previous submission, I think the last time I met with you all, we were submitting the Preliminary Design Program. And that's where we submitted the educational plan, the space summary, listing all of the spaces in the proposed project, and a list of all the alternatives. When we submitted that to the state, we got back comments. Some of those comments were in regard to the space program, as to how many classrooms, what size, what type, in that regard. They do read these things. They read them fairly carefully, and they give us comments. And so we responded to them. Thank you. And we responded to them using -- this is their state form. I know you can't read that, but it's just symbolic of the form. It has these different categories of core academic spaces, special education, art and music, physical education, administrative, and so forth. Those are the green lines there. And what we've done since then is revise this space program downward, because we were slightly over their guidelines originally, in terms of the size of the building, and with their implication that some of these spaces may be what's called ineligible for reimbursement, meaning the district would have to pay for those spaces 100 percent, not get reimbursed the way the rest of the project would. We wanted to take a harder look, and the administration and faculty and the working group worked pretty hard at scrutinizing the form, saying, you know, can we be a little more efficient in the layout of some of these spaces? So we did tighten up in a few categories here that added up to a reduction of about 5,000 square feet. So the takeaway is that the program, as we're now presenting it, is 123,000 square feet. It was originally submitted last time at -- oops, I'm sorry -- at 128,000 square feet. And obviously, there's a cost implication to that, too, and the size of the building is somewhat directly proportional to the cost of the building. The areas that we reduced, though, I think, were very smart in looking at preserving the curriculum, without reducing the course offerings, the, you know, the strong programs that are offered here, but trying to be more efficient primarily through scheduling and just in looking at some of these individual spaces. The most significant ones were in the vocations and technology category, where we had previously, we were planning on three tech ed shops, and in the business category, two business dedicated spaces. And each of those, in thinking about it and in sharing some past examples of how spaces might be multipurpose, we now think we can offer the same curriculum and do it in two tech ed shops and one business classroom that's dedicated to business. The other would be shared with a general classroom. So there'd still be spaces to offer the programs, as we said, the preliminary or the engineering class, the robotics class, the CAD drafting, the video production, entrepreneurship. The entire curriculum, as it's offered today, could continue to be offered. And again, through some scheduling and through sort of sharing of space, we can save in that category, that was 2,000 square feet. The other areas are relatively minor there, in terms of the academic spaces. The major change there was the greenhouse that was proposed. MSBA says kind of across the board that greenhouses are ineligible for reimbursement. Even though they're part of the curriculum, and even though there's a program here called greenhouse management, which we want to continue to offer, that space would have been ineligible. So the decision was made to take it out of the project, make it a freestanding greenhouse that the district could fund on its own, independent of this project, probably do it a whole lot cheaper, actually, than if it is attached to the building. And that was about 350 square feet. So again, not a large space, but one that just helps bring down the amount of ineligible square footage. Another, the chemical storage room, originally in the program, there was an entire room of some 300 square feet. In looking at it, we said we could really contain the amount of chemicals needed here in a chemical storage cabinet within a prep room, and so we could save that square footage, too. So these were the kinds of spaces that we were looking at to try to, you know, minimize the overage. And all told, we have brought it down from -- it was originally in the vicinity of 14,000 square feet of ineligible, and now it's 9,000 square feet of ineligible space. And in our experience, this is perfectly normal. Virtually every school we've designed, I think Skanska, too, every one of their projects, invariably, the submitted program is a little bit above the state guidelines. The state guidelines are not meant to be, like, prescriptive. They're not telling you how to design a school, but they're just trying to establish a standard that they can measure all schools by in the Commonwealth, so that they have some baseline for when they're, you know, allocating their funds. It's very similar to the way they deal with cost per square foot for construction. They pick a very low number that becomes a baseline. Every project exceeds it, but at least it's a common standard that they can apply throughout the state, and this is similar to that. So the good news is, as I say, the projects come down a little bit in size, which means it's come down a little bit in cost, too, but without sacrificing the educational curriculum. So the major portion of this submission is about, as I said, explaining to the MSBA how we went from all the alternatives that we submitted in the Preliminary Design Program, and how we get down to a preferred one. So as you may recall, we started with over 13 options. Originally, there were 13, a couple variants. So in terms of category, in the addition renovation category, we had four versions of additions and renovations that we first looked at. After some preliminary discussion, community meetings, feedback from groups like yours and the Building Committee and Working Group, we narrowed it down to these two. There's sort of different extremes. With this one, number one, is saving the entire existing building and adding a small piece of new classrooms and science labs across connecting A and B corridor. To this option, which saves only the gym and the auditorium, and basically provides all new space for the academic portion of the building there, so there's sort of two extremes, where this is mostly renovation, this is mostly new construction, but they still both addition/renovation categories. After some examination, after some evaluation, using the criteria that we all shared, these kind of both fell by the wayside. I'll explain a little more at the end here in summary. But to share with you the new construction options, as you remember, we located six locations on the site for potential additions. As we started developing those, there actually turned out to be nine different varieties of buildings or building types that might fit. But again, after preliminary evaluation, we narrowed that down to these three locations, one, two, and three, here, that seemed the most feasible to look into a little bit more. Again, after feedback and community input and so forth, we really -- we added a second one for number 2A here. So it became 2A.1, which this is an open courtyard, this is a closed courtyard. And it seemed that, again, the discussion among all involved, that the 2A option, that that location, location number two on the site, was the preferred option. It essentially is kind of where the baseball diamond is and a portion of the existing parking lot towards the front of the site. It had the most advantages when we analyzed it this way, but because there were some variations there, we still needed to compare these three versions of the building on site location number two. And so you can quickly see them there. As I said, one is a sort of open courtyard, one is a closed courtyard, and this one is a little bit of a hybrid. Basically, all the components are there. I'll share with you in a moment the floor plans, but just to get oriented on the site, you know, here's the main entrance. Today, that orange line is the line of the existing school. So each of these places, the building, as I said, on the baseball diamond parking lot, has the majority of the parking in front of the building. The rest of the site is used for green space, for athletic fields, and so forth. So they're all basically laid out similarly. That's why they're all, you know, NC-2A, and then there's just variations of those that we evaluated. And where we ended up, as you'll see in the end, is that the NC-2A.2 is really the preferred option. But I just want to share with you quickly the other version. So this first one looks like that on the site. You can see, each of them are located away from the existing school, so we don't interrupt the flow of the existing building. We still maintain the driveway to get back to the service area and the kitchen, deliveries, access to the playing fields, and so forth, can continue. And this can be zoned off as the construction zone. I'll show you the phasing in a moment. Here's the layout of that building. It does very closely follow the education plan, where we have these classroom clusters on the academic side of the building, on either side of the learning commons or the library, the media center there. On the other half of the building is the gymnasium locker rooms, the auditorium, and music rooms. Here's the administration. And in the center of the building is the, what we refer to now as the student commons. It has the cafeteria, but it is much more than that. And in this option and one of the others, there are two access points. The main entrance here by the administration, and a secondary entrance from the parking that's over here. And there is a second floor. Each of these is a two-story option. We really found that two stories not only meets the education plan well, but it also is more compact and works better on the site, is more efficient, and so forth. And so this is that phasing strategy that we talked about. So initially, because we'd be losing some parking where the building is sited, we need to build some new parking first to support the existing school. So we would build permanent parking in front of the building, as much as can fit there in this space. And in case we're short there, there's a contingency to build temporary parking, kind of towards the back where there's pavement now by the service area and kitchen, but we would extend that as necessary. This probably would be teacher parking, and they'd enter in the D corridor here, and this probably would be student visitor parking, and administration may be up front, and these people would enter the building the same way you do today. And then this site can be fenced off safely and segregated from the ongoing, you know, teaching and learning, and the building can be built. Once the building is built and some additional parking, and this parking, the new school can be opened, but this area here would then be a construction, or more accurately, a demolition zone, to take down the existing building, and then convert and ultimately build, you know, the playing fields that would replace it, and end up with this site plan. So that phasing strategy works for each of the variations of option two here, with the building sited in this location. The strategy is the same. But the thing that differs, as you can see, from the site plan, is that the configuration of the building is slightly different. So in this one, there's an enclosed corridor, courtyard, partly because the previous version, there was some concern about having the open courtyard there, even though it's nice to have the view to the outside, there was some concern about, one, students being allowed to use that and being able to wander off, or conversely, strangers wander in to that area, it might be a little difficult to supervise. And the configuration is slightly different, but the commons is still in the center of the building, and this is clearly the academic portion, and the public portion, and so forth. And there's still a second floor, very similar to the previous one I just showed you. And here's the hybrid one, which is really the one that seems to best meet all of the criteria that we've established. And the reason that we're recommending it, and the working group and Building Committee are now endorsing it, too, is the preferred option. So it sits in the same position on the site, here, a little different shape, but the classrooms are still facing south for good orientation. The one significant difference from the site plan is that there's one entrance point, not two now, so it's a little bit more secure and better able to be monitored in that sense. There's still the majority of the parking in front here, but instead of this being the main entrance, this becomes the bus entrance, and this is the main entrance, which relates directly to the front door of the school. And I'll show you that in a minute, three dimensionally. And otherwise, it still flows the same way, where buses are segregated from cars in terms of drop-off. There'd still be some visitor parking, very close proximity here, good for public events at either venue, the auditorium or the gym. And likewise, there's some parking that wraps around the building, that kind of supports the football field, too, a little more directly, and gives access to the service area. This is the loading dock back here in this case. So here's what that floor plan looks like. And the major change here is that the auditorium now, instead of being on the outside of the building, is moved inside here, surrounded by, you know, occupied space, including the band and chorus rooms. The office area is still by the front door, the commons area is still in the center of the building. In this case, it's really the center of the building now, much more. The two parts of the building, the academic part and the public part, are consolidated more in this plan. And also, the other major move was lifting the library learning commons to the second floor. And that freed up -- oops, sorry -- freed up space in the center here. Now we have a window, and so there's good view out of this space here, the commons area. And I'll show you that three dimensionally again. And again, there is a second floor, very much like the other plans, where you get windows on all these spaces here. So the same basic classroom clusters, but now, as we said, at the top of the main stair, there's the learning commons right in the center of the building. And that has a couple different possibilities for development, but one of the positive aspects, not only is it, you know, in the center of the academic wing, but being on the top floor, too, we can raise the ceiling and have a more appropriate ceiling height there, then when it's on the first floor, we have to sort of devote, make it a double-height space there. This allows the building to have a more compact footprint and still get the ceiling height in that learning commons. So here's an example, not necessarily of this, you know, future Wacona, but it's a photograph of another school, obviously, but a very similar space, where this is the student commons with a main stair, and it's the kind of stair that obviously you can walk up, but you can also sit on a portion of it. So it gives you that flexibility to have another kind of either informal gathering space, or you could even have lunch there, even though obviously there are dining tables. And there are views beyond, so there's glass below, there's the learning commons above. It's a high space, it's a very welcoming space. It's also the lobby to the gym and the lobby to the cafeteria, so again, it's a very efficient, multipurpose kind of space. And here's one other one. This one is, to give you an example again of that kind of stair, where students are sitting on it. It's also the main circulation route to the second floor. There's the learning commons in this school as well, at the top of that stair. A lot of glass here to get natural light into the space. It's organized very similarly in that it's sort of a T-shaped building circulation pattern. So you come up to the stair, you can go right or left. There's classrooms on either end of the building, so it's fairly compact. One difference here in this school, this was the entrance to the school, so you kind of came in and made a U-turn to go upstairs. In the proposed student commons for Wacona here, you come in the front door and flow right up the stairs, if that's where you're headed, or go right or left on the first floor. It's a very nice flow, we think, in that regard. So I want to show you what that looks like three dimensionally. I need to change software. Just bear with me. Here, we close that one. And then we open that one. And I'll show you what that looks like. Let's go right to NC-2A. So there's the, you know, building under construction, so to speak, and me adjacent to the existing high school here. When it's finished, it looks like that. So it's located there. Again, you can see the bus route, the fields. You can see, you know, it was positioned fairly close to the existing building. It will be kind of tight, but fortunately, that's a blank wall of the gymnasium right now. We're not next to classroom windows or anything, so the school is well away from the classroom portions of the existing building. And if we can sort of manipulate this three dimensionally. So this is the view currently, as you approach the school, and right now, this is the main entrance to the school. This would become the bus entrance, but you still see the main entrance in the distance, right on axis. So the school is positioned well on the site from that point of view. If we look at, as we drive down the road here, so this would be the new entrance, drive, right on axis with the front door, and I could raise that up a little bit, sorry, like there. So as you drive in, you know, visitors would be on the right here, cars would be on the left to drop off, so there's a good separation of cars and buses. And the front door is, you know, this is not meant to be designed, we're still very conceptual, but you probably would want a vertical element there to kind of announce the entrance. It's still fairly modest in size, but appropriately kind of located right there. And as we just go to the interior plan, so you can get a feel for that. So here's that plan again, and you can see, if we rotate that a little bit. Here's the front door over here. You flow in, here's sort of the lobby to go into the gym or into the auditorium, right here. There's space for dining, and then you flow up the main stairs if you're going to the second floor. Or if we go to the first floor plan, take that away. This is that line of glass now, so that the commons has a view to the outside. And here's what that would look like as you enter the building. So you can see that there. So to the right here is the auditorium, to the left is the gym. Straight ahead is the dining area, and the stairs up to the second floor. As we move a little closer, you get a feel for the space. So you might see, it's not as wide as that photograph I showed you. That was a much bigger school, and we have to be careful here to make sure that we keep the space, you know, appropriately sized, so that we stay within the square footage allowance, but it still will be a very grand space and a real symbolic heart of the school, the student commons. And it really does kind of embody the Wacona spirit. We think that, you know, a school like this deserves one space that kind of is identifiable as the heart of the school, and it serves both the academic area, the public areas, does multipurpose. So it's efficient in that regard. If we were to sort of go up the steps here and look back down, so at the top of the steps, the learning commons is on our right, there's maybe some informal part of the learning commons with a balcony overlooking that. We have the opportunity for nice windows up here to bring light into this space, so it should be a very, you know, welcoming, pleasant space to be in, and it does, you know, connect the main corridors of the building and the main access points. So, you know, we feel that it does a lot of those things that we're looking for in -- let me open this up -- to meet the educational plan. So let me just sort of summarize again what we've been saying about why, when we use the same matrix form, again, these are the options that we were really evaluating, were these three new construction options. The region on site number two, there was the A, 8.1 and 8.2, and these were the various criteria that we all developed. It came out of these meetings, community meetings, the working group. And the red, yellow, green is sort of like the traffic light, where red is the worst and green is the best. And so you can see, this one really meets all those criteria the best out of these options. And when we looked at cost as well, we updated these with the help of our professional cost estimator and talking with Skanska and their experience. These are all virtually the same cost, the new construction options. It's sort of plus or minus 1 percent. But even the addition/renovation, the one that's mostly new construction and saves only the gym and the auditorium, this is much like the Mount Greylock strategy that they ended up with. In our situation, unfortunately, this actually ended up more expensive than new construction, partly because of the configuration of the building, the layout, the extended construction period, some of those factors. And even the more entirely renovation with some addition, the cost of that started approaching the cost of new construction. It's within 5 or 10 percent of the cost of new construction. And when you look at this as kind of a value proposition, when renovation starts getting that close to the cost of new construction, there are many factors that weigh in the balance of new construction. Here are some of them, that we think as to why this option, 2A.2, is the best and should be the preferred option. It best meets the educational vision. As we said, it really embodies not only the letter of that kind of, but the spirit of that plan. It has the best long-term value, and even though it's a fraction, but it's the lowest cost of the new construction options. It's a very energy-efficient, compact layout, but still flexible. It has, you know, that good use of the site. That's why site number two was seen as the best version, best location for new construction. It segregates the built areas of the site, the paved areas, the building, from the green areas of the site, nicely to give you flexibility in both areas. It has that single entrance, as opposed to multiple entrances into the building, which we think is a safety and security consideration. And it has a very straightforward And it has a very straightforward construction sequence. It's short in duration, and so it has the least disruption to the ongoing teaching and learning of any of the options. And just to be sort of fully explain the possibilities here, you know, people say, why not renovate? Why isn't the renovation? It's slightly less expensive, one of those options is. Well, the option that's the least expensive doesn't fully meet the educational vision. It's still the same layout of the building. We've tried to introduce classroom clusters as best we could in that option. It didn't really meet them nearly as well as new construction. It also doesn't fully meet the space needs. We'd still end up with some classrooms that are small. We'd still end up with a gym that's small and not the full, you know, double-court, full-size gym. It doesn't really have that long-term value, as we said, because even though we put in all new systems, we would have new windows, we would have new roof, we'd have a lot of new finishes, we'd have new heating system, new plumbing system in a fully renovated building. It would be like new in a lot of ways, but it's not equivalent to all new construction. We'd still have, for instance, the structure is still 60 years old, it's still the original structure. The underground utilities, plumbing, the electric lines, those are still original. Those wouldn't get replaced in a renovation. So not everything is new, so it's not quite apples and apples. And that's one reason that when the cost gets as close as it does from addition renovation to new construction, the balance really tilts to new construction. And then, you know, as we mentioned, doing a renovation is a longer, it's at least three academic years with, you know, the need for temporary facilities and phasing and moving of classrooms, kind of leapfrogging around the existing building, because not all of it's going to get done during summer, when students and teachers aren't here. And so that involves, you know, a fair amount of temporary measures and measures that are non-reimbursable in the project cost, like renting modular classrooms to free up some space for a contractor. Renting those classrooms is going to be required, but it's not reimbursable. So you're devoting more of the project, more percentage of the project cost, excuse me, project cost to things that don't have long-term value and are not reimbursable. And as many of you know, you know, doing a renovation, there's a greater likelihood we're going to run into unforeseen conditions, which lead to change orders, and to protect against that, a greater percentage of the budget has to be devoted to contingency. So again, even though you can't quite compare apples and apples, because, you know, the contingency is taking away somewhat from money that could go to other things in the project to cover those unforeseen conditions. So when you add all those up, that's why we believe that option 2A2 is the, and should be the preferred option that we submit to the MSBA. It's endorsed by the working group and by the building committee. So that's what we had tonight, Sean.
I have one quick question. When you talk about the, like, the student common area, cafeteria, and then the learning common just up the stairs, is there, I think I saw, but I wasn't clear, is there a sound barrier, wall of glass, doors?
It could be. That's one of the areas that we would study more in the next phase of the project. We certainly have the flexibility to look at that a couple of different ways. There are times I think you're going to want to close it off for acoustics. And so there are possible ways to do that and still remain, still retain the transparency with sliding glass walls or things like that. It could be more conventional doors in a glass wall, but there are options there, so that we could separate it acoustically, because that is an issue. The cafeterias, even with good treatment, tend to be louder kinds of spaces, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Does the cost of a new school include the demolition of the old one and building the ball fields?
Yeah, that's a good question. We should recap for everyone that these costs, first of all, in those line items, you saw there were always two lines, two numbers. The upper numbers are construction costs, those are the hard costs of construction, including demolition. But then the lower number there is the total project cost. And that's really like considered, some people call it a turnkey cost, so it includes fees and contingencies and furniture and equipment, so it's an all-in cost, and it does include the demolition of the existing building. And that is a reimbursable cost to a great extent. Some of it, some of the hazardous material removal is ineligible for reimbursement. There's some subtleties there, but, and doing the, building the new fields is also eligible for reimbursement, but again, the MSBA puts a cap on site costs that most all projects of this nature exceed, but all those are in the project cost numbers here, all those aspects of the work.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about the parking. I'd like to see us continue to work on that. I don't have concerns about the building, but trying to bring more parking spaces closer to the entrance to the building, I think, is a big issue for us. And the way it's laid out right now, you'd be at, people would be parking, having to park at the other end of the property just to stick them in and do something in the auditorium.
Well, I think this plan is a little bit more compact than what we have today, certainly, where people are coming a long ways to get in the building. We've moved the building a little closer to the street and a little closer to the parking areas.
Well, what happens now is people will park all over the grass and you have to have police come in and put up signs and everything else, so, you know, it's not just the area that you see as parking, people are using other areas out there as parking, and I guess that's what we're thinking about.
Yeah. One of the things we would typically look at is trying to, again, like a lot of things, get multiple use out of things, get double use out of the driveways, so that for events, you can parallel park along them, so you can get more cars closer, because you don't have to worry about buses, you know, during those times or drop off. And so we can expand the number of parking spaces without expanding the amount of pavement, which is always a good thing.
Yes, sir. First, I want to say kudos to you guys on the design, and when you went from 2A to 2A1 and 2A2, really clever use of the space and bringing it down, shrinking it down. I think it was a really nice job on the design piece, really good.
Appreciate it.
The only concern I have with the design as it is right now, when you look in, you know, you guys know this stuff way better than I do, but my impression was when I was looking at the plan from above of the dining area. It looks like, the way you have the tables set up in there, on the one image, and it might just be the way of it set up, it looks like at one portion, it's like you're going to be eating in a hallway. So I don't know if, maybe it's just the way you think, you know, if you lay out the space, or I don't know whether, you know, obviously, you're stuck with square footage, but it looks like you're dining in a hallway.
Yeah, yeah.
It might not be, like I said, you guys know that better than I do. That's my only concern, I'm just going to plant out there and...
This is very conceptual. There are still ways, one of the subtle ways to work that is how you position the columns, the structure, because the structure can sort of imply enclosure, and if they're not necessarily against the wall, so that it's one big open space, but they're moved in a little bit, then you define where the corridor is, you define where the dining area is. We may be able to address that, so it doesn't feel like you're eating in a hallway.
I figured you were.
Yeah.
How far away is the first wall of the new construction from the existing wall? What's the distance there? I've heard like, you know, other projects have been like a foot away.
Yeah, no, we're not going to be that close, because we're going to be separated by the driveway. Let me go back, let's see if I can get to the right site plan here. Right. The orange line is the existing wall of the gym, or the locker rooms actually, right there. And there's a driveway there that we want to maintain, so that's already about 25 feet away, and then we'll probably be another couple of feet beyond that. So we're, you know, a safe distance away, and it allows both access and fire vehicles to get in and out there, so we're not that close in that regard.
Paul, recently, there's been an article about Greylock having a dispute with the building of Leamstown. Not really a dispute, but some pretty heavy fees for inspection. Is that included in this price, the fees?
We're not at that level of detail yet, where, you know, we could tell you, we've certainly made an allowance for so-called, you know, general conditions and markups and things like that. Most school projects, there is some reduction in fees usually granted by the municipalities. With regional schools, it is a tricky situation, because, you know, in essence, one community is making a concession to the entire region that the other communities aren't. It would be different if you were building a high school just for one town, then clearly they, and fees are again, non-reimbursable from the MSBA, so that's another reason that MSBA doesn't want to pay a project to pay a town, so they just say fees are not going to be reimbursed. So a lot of towns do waive them, or waive them in some part. That's a discussion you'll have to have amongst your district, because as I said, there is, and maybe you've run into this with other kinds of expenses that Dalton maybe bears just because the building happens to be located here, that the other communities don't, but it can be addressed, just to let you know that, yeah, fees are not reimbursable, and generally, these kinds of projects, there is some waiver to them.
Having spoken to about, you know, having inspections and whatnot, how much of an impact of a small town like Dalton who has a part-time inspector, how much impact would that have on the amount of time that this will take? I can imagine it, at certain times, you've got to have people there.
Kind of anticipates this. For projects of this kind of magnitude, they put a lot of onus on us as architects. We sign affidavits that the building meets code and that we're going to make periodic and regular inspections, so we're out here all the time. And usually, the local inspectors aren't overly burdened, at least the building inspectors still need to make some plumbing or look at the foundations, but it's usually not as big, you know, a burden on them as you might think, because there's so much of a burden on us and our engineers and our consultants.
That's not so much that, it's just getting done there. I mean, because I think we share with a couple other towns, you know, some of these inspectors. John could probably answer that.
Our building inspector is full-time.
Full-time.
But I can respond to, on other projects, even when there is a part-time building inspector, we coordinate with them, like when inspections are required. It is flexible too, so it doesn't mean you have to be there at like 9:00 in the morning if he's there that day or the next day. Works out well, so.
No, I was just commenting about the building inspector, that's all. Thank you. Thank you.
I have another one. I think there had been some talk earlier about access for the public, like when we're talking about gym space and auditorium space, to the academic wing and being able to limit that. And I know you mentioned when you were talking about this 2A.2, that you approximated that a little bit more. Was it still a consideration to have a way to segregate it for safety reasons?
It does, it does. So if there's an event in the gym or the auditorium and everyone's coming in the front door here, you know, this space would be open, but right at this point, and right at this point, you could have cross corridor doors that are locked, and you could mirror that on the second floor. So even if people were to go up the stairs, they couldn't go either direction. So that's easily done, that these areas can be segregated for after-hour use. And, you know, all the areas that you want to open, you know, the set of men's and women's rooms right here that could serve either function there, the locker rooms, you know, are all accessible. The other thing too, by the way, with this kind of sharing, then the kitchen can act as the concession during halftime, if you want to have refreshments. You have a kitchen and dining area, you know, immediately adjacent to those areas.
Oh, what's the meeting system? Is it going to be gas?
Well, we haven't decided, you know, in specifics, most likely it'd be gas. There's gas to the site now in terms of a fuel source, but we still want to, just as we investigated alternatives for the layout of the building, we want to investigate alternatives for each of the systems as we, in the next phase. So at the end of the schematics, we'll have a decision. So in, by January, February, when we finish that phase, we'd have those kind of details nailed down.
One more question. The elimination of the greenhouse, will there be any allowances mechanically for a panel or something that, you know, could eventually be tapped into to power such a unit when we finally build it?
Yeah, we would want to identify on the site plan, you know, where the greenhouse is going to go, you know, maybe it's here, there's, you know, this is south on the site, so there's a lot of opportunities here, but we want to make sure we run some utilities out there so that there's power and water, and maybe even network connections, you know, we can put those in underground, and then the school district at some other time can build it, yeah.
You've seen this baseball field pointing at the parked cars. Is there any way, turning that around? It seems like that's the way things are done.
It's a pretty good poke.
Well, you know, you never know.
Yeah.
This is, I think, 320 feet there, so you got to hit it about 420 to hit a car there.
Just so you know, it's 228 down the right field line.
Yeah, it's bigger than your current field. But in other situations like this, if it does get to be nervous, we have a fence here already. You could turn that fence, you may have seen, sometimes they have these fishing net fences that you raise, and, you know, they don't have to be permanent, but you can have them up there if you're really worried.
Take it out of his first ball in this game.
And this is a better orientation, though, for baseball field than the current one in terms of compass orientation. That's why it's done this way, so the sun isn't in the batter's eyes and minimizes...
Historically, this area has noted for that.
I know Pittsfield sun is historic, I guess they don't want to change it, but they have to take sun breaks, because the setting sun is too, is facing west, the field is facing west.
Will there be the option to install air conditioning in the future, if you ever wanted to do that?
We'll have a discussion as to whether and how much air conditioning should be in the initial building too during the next phase. And depending on, you know, how that goes, we would talk about the ability to do it in the future, if the building is in full year condition. Probably doesn't need to be, we're not, you know, we see it going both ways nowadays, although the more buildings get used, and, you know, especially for community use or summer school, or it is sometimes a worthwhile thing to consider, you know, fully air conditioning a building. We have done partial air conditioning, where, you know, you might say, one of those classroom clusters is air-conditioned for summer school or something like that. So there's a variety of options there. It ties into operating costs too. You want to be efficient in operating the building. Air conditioning does cost more just to operate as well as to install, so we'll look at those things as we move forward.
I don't know, you said that, there's two figures there, one's the all-in figure, turnkey figure, but now we're going to be discussing gas or oil, you know, air conditioning or not, what is that going to do to those figures?
Well, that's why, one reason it's a range, why those numbers are a range, is because some of those variables aren't nailed down yet, but they will be in the next phase.
Those variables will go into some of those.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. You know, even the finishes in the building, you know, the quality of the finishes or the wall materials, there's a little, you know, range there in what's acceptable and still be a 50-year lifespan building, so that's why we present it as kind of an order of magnitude and a range, but by February, by the next submission, we'll have that nailed down.
All right, we have a motion for this approval of this preferred schematic report. The school building committee did meet prior, and I think Carl referenced that, and they have unanimously endorsed this 2A.1.
2.
Did I say 2A.2, sorry.
2A.2, yeah.
So if a member would please make the motion.
Whereas the Wacona School Building Committee approved the preferred schematic report on August 23rd, 2018, it resolved that the Central Regional School Committee approves and authorizes the architect and owner's project manager to submit the preferred schematic report-related materials to the MSBA for its consideration.
Second.
Here we have a motion, a second, to approve the preferred schematic report. Is there any discussion? Any seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's what's coming up, by the way, in terms of the calendar. We'll be submitting this on September 2nd. It gets reviewed by a subcommittee and ultimately approved by the MSBA board on October 31st. That's their next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all. Skanska, you're right, appreciate it. This is going to be all right. Appreciate it. School committee.
Caesar?
Okay, back to the agenda. Student affairs, we have Mr. Brooks.
I don't have so much to report on, but the fall season for sports is underway, so practices have begun, and I know our athletes are excited for the upcoming season. Wocona has received the new Chromebooks, as everybody knows, and we're excited to be using those this year. And then finally, the ninth grade half-day orientation will take place on Tuesday the 28th, and then first day school through Sunday night. Can't wait. I can't wait. I'm excited. Can't wait.
Thank you. And Secretary's report, would a member please make the motion to accept the regular meeting of July 26, 2018 minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 26, 2018 as printed.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All of us in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Would a member please move the votes?
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash three dated August 9, 2018 payroll in the amount of $434,674.96.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash three. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash three D dated August 9, 2018, accounts payable in the amount of $76,758.13.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash three Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 2019 dash three dated August 10, 2018, accounts payable in the amount of $165,359.76.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP 2019 dash three. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash four dated August 23, 2018, payroll in the amount of $428,694.24.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash four. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash four D dated August 23, 2018, accounts payable in the amount of $155,773.18.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019 dash four Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR AP 2019 dash four dated August 24, 2018, accounts payable in the amount of $911,000, land $111,681.74.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP 2019 dash four. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
No extension, the motion carries.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Communications report of the chair, just a couple things tonight. As you know, we still have vacancies for the school committee, Town of Washington and Town of Covington. The open meeting law complaint, you should have all received an email that the plaintiff did file an appeal with the Attorney General's office, so we'll hear about that. Our attorney did review the video from that night and personally didn't see any problems. So, but it's unpredictable how the AG's office may choose to interpret that, so we'll just wait to hear on that. We've heard nothing yet. I don't recall, there's a number of days in the law that says they have to respond to us, but we've heard nothing. The next thing is the November 8th school meeting, it's the November 8th school committee meeting currently on the calendar. We've got a conflict with that date mainly due to the MASC, MASs conference that's in Hyannis. Most important part is the superintendent will be gone with a couple of school committee members. Being this reelection year, the superintendent needs to read the members, new members or returning members in, so we want to have the committee consider moving that to November 15th a week later. If they would, would a member please make a motion?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the change to the following meeting date, November 8, 2018 to November 15, 2018.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to change the November school committee meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And just a note there about the school committee election coming up in November. And I'll move on to subcommittee reports and recommendations. First up is curriculum. Ever been any curriculum meetings? I don't think so.
We haven't.
Okay, so we'll move on to finance. Peter Boni.
We met this evening here at the school at six o'clock, validated the agenda. There were no comments from the audience at the time. Our minutes were approved from the July 26, 2018 meeting. We had a discussion around the special education rate for FY 2019. I can read that motion and then we can go over the discussion. Just to preface that, the special education rate for 2019 is about 2.5 percent increase. It's in line with our special education increase for the year, so. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee set the base tuition rate for non-student residents to attend Central Berkshire Regional School District for placement in special education program at $23,225 for the 2018-19 school year as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the FY 19 special education tuition rate. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
We also received an update on the mass budget from Melissa. What you've seen in the paper has still not been finalized, so those dollars that were spoken to in the Eagle that we're supposed to receive, we still don't know what exactly those dollars look like yet from the state, so we can't speak to those and any impact that that might have on the budget at this time. Was that part of the packet, what we reviewed? With chapter 70 and 71?
Yes, you're talking about the straight chapter 70 and 71 funding. What I'm wondering about is the rural funding that was...
Right, and that's what I just mentioned.
That's what you're about, okay.
It has not been finalized yet. Our chap... We looked at the chapter 78, chapter 71, transportation, the school charter reimbursement, and the charter assessment, and some of those numbers are still going to be variable right now based on legislative moves in the budget. We looked at those, they look favorable as well as the school choice receiving, kind of the school choice sending right now. That also looks favorable in the budget. As those get more affirmed up, you'll see those numbers in our initial budget presentation.
If the committee's curious, Mr. Bueno sent out an email about the choice in, choice out. I had asked that question earlier, and I was just mainly interested through the committee to see where we were with the conic with the voting and if that had any effect, but it seems like it's... And it's still too early to tell.
One more.
Next couple weeks.
And lastly, at finance subcommittee tonight, we discussed the... Or we took an initial look at the guidelines and instructions and calendar for the 2020 budget, and we had some discussion on the budget guidelines. They're in your packet. One note is number five, the instructions there, they don't apply going forward this year, so when you're taking a look at, taking a look, those, please strike number five.
What is number five?
Contingency.
Okay.
We handle it differently this... In the last few years.
So the finance subcommittee is going to be meeting again on September 27 at Beckett Washington at 5:30. I would really encourage the rest of the school committee members and the finance subcommittee to really take a look at these guidelines and please forward any additional recommendations to me and Boni for our review and discussion at the next meeting, and then in October, we'll bring them forward the same as last year for the school committee to vote on them. But essentially, between now and the end of September is really your time to look at them and to make any recommendations if you'd like to see anything added or anything changed. That's the end of my report.
So just to clarify, an email such as that, it's for recommendations for consideration and the agenda for the topics, and that all has to be brought out at the meeting, just for open meeting law concerns. All right, how about policy?
Policy, we met yesterday, and every two years, the bullying prevention policy has to be reviewed and updated accordingly. So we met and made several updates to that policy, mainly things like removing Berkshire Trail schools and updating their titles of the people who are doing the programs that have been... And stuff, and we have to... Reading on that first reading, so. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the first reading to the bullying prevention plan as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the first reading to the bullying prevention plan. Is there any discussion? Just to note, there are two readings that the policy would be adopted upon an affirmative vote for the second reading. No discussion? Okay, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
That is it.
Okay, thank you. Personnel.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Technology.
We have not met, we have a meeting scheduled coming September 10.
September 10, okay. Yeah, just to note with technology, there were some emails and discussions at the last meeting. It was decided at the last meeting that technology will be receiving a report in October before the school committee about how our shared services are working as well as what the... Basically, the structural aspects of what... Or the planning aspects for what technology has moving into the following year for the budget formulation. I think there was some misunderstandings about what the intent of that was. It was more... It was less financially related than it was planning related. That's the plan moving forward. That's it. We've already been through the Wocona building project, so superintendents report recommendations.
Sure. So I did have the opportunity to meet with almost everybody on the school committee, which was excellent. I really appreciate your time. I know you have a variety of competing demands on your time and attention, so that was excellent. I am happy to meet with anyone I haven't yet. I do have one more meeting next week. Mr. Farley's back from vacation, so I will be meeting and I'll update accordingly. The information was really helpful, especially the conversation. We spoke on a variety of topics. A couple things that stood out specific to my practice, really clearly identifying concerns and things that we are working on before getting into solutions. I do struggle with being kind of a Debbie Downer or taking a negative tone, so I may even use language such as, "This is something we are concerned about." I am going to discuss ways we're addressing it, but I do want you to be aware we are concerned about it. So just some really great feedback from people who are able to watch my presentation over the past, in some cases, three years, in some case, less, but very helpful for the perspective. Also, this came out a couple times, which is really a great observation. We spend a lot of time talking about what we're doing and what we're going to be doing, and sometimes for very good reason, we stop doing something. Maybe the interest is no longer there for the student. Maybe we have brought something to completion. Maybe we've added something better and something else doesn't make sense to continue it, but we don't do as great of a job of saying, "We're not doing this anymore." And then you might say, "What happened with that? Why'd that go away?" So really making sure that not just through a line item in a budget, but that we're highlighting things that we may move away from, even if it is for a good reason. So I'm going to try and be aware of that. The other thing, if you do have the time to meet, your perspective on the MSBA project is extremely valuable, because you represent every town and you represent almost every constituency, every district. So for example, you know, Mr. Les asked a question tonight, is the demolition involved? The cost of the demolition and the overall range? I think that is a question shared by a lot of people in the community, so I'm going to ask, I'm going to add that to frequently asked questions. Go honey, you're still here. I'm responding. Really good perspective on... People are really... A lot of people are sold on the building, or they trust the judgment of the educators, but they need to understand the implications for them as taxpayers and really making sure we highlight that we were conservative with certain decisions and making sure people understand where those decisions were made and how they don't impact the educational programming. So if you have time, it does serve both those purposes, and I was able to share that feedback with the school building committee, so I appreciated that. It's been an incredibly busy week, but it's been a great week. Just to highlight a couple things for you, the administrative team and Trooper Kanata and Jeff Coe, Chief Coe from the Dalton Police, spent about two hours together. Today's Thursday, Wednesday, really closely looking at our safety planning. Our big goal last year was to get through reunification drills, make sure we clearly have reunification sites established and we have clear plans in place. This year, Trooper Kanata wants us to move forward with what's called Stop the Lead Training, which is some basic training for trauma situations, so we're going to be adding that to our plans, but just really good to align our practices, make sure that we are being as proactive as we can when it comes to student safety. We also had an awesome opportunity, and he is now famous among MASC, who has retweeted. Mr. Peters shared some of his expertise, being somebody who works far more often with visual representations of data than we do, so I hope you see us apply the skills we learned when we do our data presentation later this fall, because it was excellent. So we've been doing a lot of trainings together to get ready, but we're finishing up tomorrow and we'll be ready for the start of the year. I do want to bring to your attention, opening day this year, I'm really excited for. If you can be there and you want to be there. We've actually... We are having our keynote presenter is a young lady, she's known by LiveBits. We've talked about her before, she's been in the district before. She speaks about using the digital platform to project your voice on a global scale as a student safely and in a way that you are empowering yourself and connecting to the world around you. What's really nice about it is Liv is an entering sixth grader, so we invited sixth grade students to join us. So the sixth graders will be my special guests at the keynote presentation. They'll be coming just for the keynote and leaving right after, but they'll have the opportunity to have a meet and greet with this young lady who speaks publicly all around the country at this point, and to hear about her story and to see how they can use their own voice. So if you can join us, you're more than welcome at the keynote in Nessickis at the auditorium at 9:30 on opening day. After that, and I was waiting to get more information about what staff would select before I shared this with you, but after that, there are different sessions that staff can select to participate for opening day. So we have a morning session running and an afternoon and about six to seven different offerings. So if I were a teacher, if I were Laura Miller and I was teaching at Wocona, I got an email from myself earlier this week, and there was basically a course offerings. We're trying to UDL things for staff the way we work for kids, so Laura might say, "We've got this new Chromebook initiative. I see that there's a presenter here, a Google certified teacher from the collaborative offering, an intro to Chromebooks. If her skill sets are more advanced than that, there might be one on advanced Chromebooks." There's something else on supporting students socially, emotionally, and... There's something else on supporting students socially, emotionally in the classroom. There are some on things that are more specific, like Laura's a special ed teacher, assisting students in facilitating their own IEP meetings. So basically, she could select two different sessions and be able to kind of have some choice herself as to what PD would be most helpful to start the year. So I'll send that to you. Also, in my opening letter this year for the first time, I did include a little survey just about my own practice to date, just a quick eight questions, how am I doing with things? My plan is to administer that survey again at the end of the year to try and compare the data, and I'll certainly share that with you as well. Hopefully, I can use it to grow and to focus on areas that I can get better. So the feedback is pouring in, and once I get that data, I will certainly share it with you now and then again when I assess it at the end of the school year. So that's pretty much everything. I will keep including things in the schools you might want to come and participate in. In my superintendent's reports this year, that was a part of the feedback in the interviews. And then I did just, the civil rights contacts, we just updated to reflect about one change, but that's pretty much it. Unless you have any questions about opening day or opening week or this week or busy. This week's very, very busy for us, and then next week is even, you know, is the equivalent for the building, so the busyness to get ready and next week is the busyness when everyone's there and doing what needs to be done.
Yeah, there's no questions for the superintendent. On the agenda, superintendent's noted some personnel changes, and I think she's also reflected that, and where she plans to have some reports coming up at the end of September.
Yes.
I think is what you said?
Yep.
To introduce some of the new staff. And at this time, I'm not aware of any old business or new business. Is there any particular agenda item you'd like to see for our first meeting in September? Please let me know. At this time, we'll accept remarks from the committee. Anyone has any? Mr. Les.
Couple things. Getting back to the new school, it's a pretty high cost, and I stated, last time we visited this, it was a little over 10 years ago. The cost back then was 35 million bucks. Now it's doubled that. I'd like to see some numbers of what's going to cost the town, you know, I got $70 million out of, bonds, whatever.
That'll definitely be provided.
If you're going to do that, the next time we talk about this, that would be great. And the second thing is, can we arrange to have these chairs at every meeting? They're a lot better than the wood ones.
Mine is this.
What? The 35 million, was that on the building?
Yes, it was in the building, and it was between 30 and 35 million, and at the time, it was considered too much, they didn't think the towns would go for it. I think it was a preliminary, like a feeler, a committee that lasted about a year, and it was fairly negative, you know, response to replace Wocona because Wocona was a better building at the time, you know? So, but it's interesting how, you know, 10 or 15 years, the price has doubled.
Absolutely. Anything else? Accept motion to adjourn. Accept motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Good evening.